I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. And today's date is November 1st, 2023, and the time is 6:30. Welcome all of you to our meeting. The Planning Commission clerk, please call, roll call, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Power.
Here.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Here.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Here.
And Chair Bowie.
Here.
All are present.
Yes. Now we would like to do the flag salute. And I would like to ask Commissioner Casey Wolpert help us to lead to the flag salute.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now would like to hear the report from the Planning Secretary regarding late commission. And Planning Secretary, are there any late communication items?
Thank you, Chair Bowie. There are no late communications associated with tonight's meeting.
Now, item four, we come to ex parte communication. This session is intended to allow all officers the opportunity to review any disclosure regarding the visit or ex parte communication about the public hearing and the regular business items.
Yes, Chair Bowie, I did visit the site, which the Planning Commission will be considering this evening as the public hearing item.
And Chair Bowie, I drove by the property for agenda item 8.1 as well.
Yes. And I myself just drive by the properties this afternoon. Now we come to the special presentation. Are there any special presentation?
There are none.
Okay. Now we open to the oral communication. Item six, oral communication. Planning Commission clerk, please read the procedure into the record. Do we have any request to speak during oral communication?
No, we don't, but I'll read the procedures into the record. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at the time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
You can call on public speaker, please.
At this time, we don't have any public spheres for oral communications.
So if there is none, then we will close the oral communication and move to the next Item number seven, approval of the minutes of last meeting, October 18, 2023. We have a motion by any of you. Make a motion, please.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay. So we have motion and second.
Okay, that motion was made by Commissioner Power and seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Roll call, Commissioner Anderson.
It was, I think Commissioner Hamadi.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seconded.
By Hamadi, I'm sorry. Okay, roll call, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Power.
Yes.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Yes.
And Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Now go to item number eight for public hearings.
Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With exception of the applicant or designee, all attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use this discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions. At this time, I do have three speaker cards from the applicant. Oh, I think that's the appropriate time to do the presentation first.
So we can open for the public hearing now.
Well, Chair Bowie, I'll just read the item 8.1 and then Sandy will present a presentation for the commission's consideration.
Please do so.
Before we start the public hearing. So on the agenda tonight, item 8.1 is case number 2023-0667. This is a conditional use permit pertaining to property located 5948 Westminster Boulevard. And this is a proposed church facility. The project planner is Sandy Kim, and at this time I'll turn it over to Sandy who has a presentation for us.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. For tonight's meeting, I'd like to present case number 2023-0667. The request and settlement involve a conditional use permit, and the project site is located at 5948 Westminster Boulevard and identified by accessory parcel number 195-141-45. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a new religious place of worship per Westminster Code. Going forward, the project will be referred as a new church, and the church is proposed at 7,000 square feet with 116 permanent pew seats. The project site is located near southwest corner of Westminster Boulevard and Springdale Street. The existing 3.88 acre shopping center, which is equivalent to 1,000, I mean 169,136 square feet, consists of five parcels with five different owners. The surrounding land uses consist of commercial uses with C1 and C2 zoning districts to the north and east of the project, and low to high residential uses with R1, R2, and R5 residential zoning districts to the north, east, south, and west of the project site. This is an image of the subject shopping center looking south from Westminster Boulevard. The church is identified by a yellow box which is tucked in the corner of this center. As previously indicated, the subject shopping center consists of five separate parcels with five different owners. The subject center was developed in 1966 and was in conformance under the development standards of that time and cohabited as one shopping center through a recorded covenant agreement. In other words, the center operated with shared parking agreement. Although the covenant agreement expired in 2020, the property owners of the center have renewed the recorded covenant to provide reciprocal exchange of rights and easement to each property owners and their tenant, the rights to use all the parking areas and vehicle access points. The subject shopping center is considered a legal nonconforming because the center does not conform to today's development standards such as parking and landscaping. However, the subject center was in compliance at that time when it was constructed. The subject center requires 217 parking spaces based on the current parking standards. However, there are 205 existing parking spaces. The subject site plan provides more details of the shopping center. The new church parcel and the buildings are, building are identified by a yellow star and orange parcel lines. The subject shopping center currently provides a total of 205 parking spaces, shared parking spaces, and they are located in the front, side, and rear of the shopping center. The reserved 29 parking spaces are mostly provided in the rear of the center, and those spaces are intended for Sunday services when the parking demand is the highest. The project architect updated the site plan, was able to add four additional parking spaces, which is why the site plan, which is displaying, has a total of 209 shared parking spaces. The project floor plan is divided into four areas and are shown in blue, yellow, purple, and gray areas. The main church services are held in the blue areas, which provides 116 pew seats with a 360 square foot stage and an ADA ramp and a storage room. Offices and a break room are in, in yellow area, which consists, consists of offices for staff, counseling, and pastor. Ancillary classrooms are in purple area, and these classrooms are part of the main church activities such as children's ministry or the Bible studies and does not include any commercial type classrooms. The, the restrooms and the janitorial, janitor, janitor storage areas are shown in gray. The proposed church schedule indicates that Sunday services are offered at 9:00 a.m. and at 5:00 p.m. With the regular business hours are proposed Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which is a standard time for typical office uses. The proposed classrooms will be utilized for children's ministry and Bible studies on Wednesdays through Saturday evenings from anywhere between 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Again, no commercial uses are proposed at the new church, such as daycare centers or private school. Very, various church offices are proposed with private counseling services offered Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. by most likely appointments. Land use assessment. Proposed church is permitted land use with approval of a conditional use permit per municipal code. The parking code requires one parking space for every four permanent seat. Therefore, the church requires 29 parking spaces and 29 reserved parking spaces are provided on the site, project site plan for Sunday services. Additionally, per nonconforming codes section, it is city's intent to encourage the continuing improvements and the use of nonconforming structures while allowing for improvements in their appearances. The recommended conditions of approval includes upgrading the trash enclosure, installing new exterior lighting for safety, and providing decorative potted planters near the church entrances. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the planning case number 2023-0667 with recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I can answer any questions. Additionally, the applicant and their team is in attendance and can answer more specific details of the church. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Quick question. You stated the, the place has, it's not confirming with codes.
I'm sorry?
You said, you stated that, that the area is not confirming with codes now, but before was confirmed before?
Correct.
Okay.
Develop, oh, I'm sorry.
There's any permit, like for parking variance?
In 2010, when originally Goodwill proposed to expand, they did allow to have reduced parking at that time. The city acknowledged that the, the parking development standards at the time had less parking requirement, therefore it's considered nonconforming.
Okay, I see. Thanks.
Chair Bowie?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, when I visited the site today, I noticed that there, I guess there was an existing church at that location. On, on the elevation, it had, it says the 14-6 church. That was, it had a name up there. And so I, are they, are they currently operating a church at that location?
No, I'm not aware of it. I've visited the site several times, and I didn't, I didn't see anyone occupying that tenant space.
Okay, but, but they do have a sign. Okay. And then on the, well, I guess maybe going back, if you could go back to the, well, I guess on the proposed floor plan, which is up now, there's a lot of white area. What is, is, is the proposed floor plan just a basic representation, not an exact utilization of the building area? There's a lot of white area around the sanctuary area.
Perhaps you could ask the pastor and the architect of specific uses.
Okay, that's fine. And on the, the area, can you go back to the aerial of, of the shopping center? Right there, yeah, right there. So let's see, what I'm looking at, there's a planter out front of the facility of the building, and it looks like to me from the aerial photo, that's within their property. The, the yellow outline is their property?
Correct.
And did you notice that planter?
Correct.
Is that, that's theirs?
I believe so.
Okay, so if, if it is theirs, oh, okay, I appreciate that. That's good to know. And then, let's see, what else? Do you know, is, is there a, a proposed route of, I guess what I would call a designated route of safe travel from the rear parking area that we're seeing on this overhead? There's the 29 spaces will be in back. Is there a designated path or easily accessible entry, egress, ingress into the front of the church? I mean, from that area, do you know?
I will go back to the site plan.
Okay.
There are, along Westminster Boulevard, there are four entry points. One, two, three, and four. And along Springdale, there are two entry points. And this is the final lane, and this is all open and clear.
Okay, I'm not, so we're.
Sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Anderson, you're talking about ingress and egress into the building, not into the parking area.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the parking.
Pedestrian, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. Pedestrian access, so the map that I'm seeing on, in the lower left-hand corner, we're seeing that little area, there's two rows of parking on that. So my question is, so going from there to the front of the church, how are people, is there a clear path, a clear safe path for people to navigate up to the front of the church?
Through the building.
Through, oh.
Oh, oh, are you, okay, so they.
He's talking about the back entrance.
There are, and I will go back to the floor plan. So there is an entrance, at the front entrance, and there is a rear entrance.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so there, there will be a rear entrance, okay, well, we can get a little more detail on that later. Okay, that's all I guess, so.
His question clearly is, the 29 space parking on the corner in the back, for them to walk to the church from the back, there's any clear walkway for the people?
Yes.
That's what he is asking about mainly.
So this is the designated parking in the rear, bottom left corner. Oh, my mouse cursor is not showing. Is there a way I can see it? Like a pointer? Oh, the pen.
Oh, yeah, your, your little dot's working now.
All right. This is the path of travel. Yes, there is a path of travel.
Okay.
And the conditions of approval require external, exterior safety lighting along the path.
Okay. And, and those parking spaces shown in the, in the brown shaded area on the lower left corner, those are actually part of the overall parking allotment for the center?
Correct. That's, that is part of the original parking areas.
And then, and the parking lot, the parking spaces directly behind the, the building, those are also counted within the overall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sticking with the site plan that you have up, on the upper right corner, I believe there's some construction going on there. I'm just wondering what, what's being put in.
The gas station is a separate parcel that's not part of the shopping center, and yes, they are under construction.
And do we know a timeline for that project? I'm just curious.
No, I don't, but I do know the staff went out last week or two weeks ago to do some inspections to get the status. I could give you an update.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Thank you, Chair. On 5946, so the building that is on, I guess that's the west side of the lot, they're still part of the communal parking, correct, or the, the covenant parking that you're talking about? So those 29 spots in the back are actually on their parcel, but they're, they're going to allow the use of the parking?
Correct.
Okay. And then the parking number and condition, I know we talked about number of parking spots per congregant pew seat. Does that include staff? Staff that works at the church, volunteers that show up, you know, other employees or something like that, you know, you could have cleaning crew and other workers of the church, the parking numbers are not including that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Another question, 5952, the adjacent tenant that used to be Rancho Market, who's in there now? I, I couldn't recall.
Colleen Nels.
Okay. And do we know their hours of operation?
No, I don't know the specific.
Just curious if that was in the report or I overlooked it, but thank you.
Now I have questions. First of all, 5952, you say that the adjacent tenant. How many units of adjacent tenants there? And have you do any studying about solve problems to those tents?
I believe 5952 is not a tenant. It's just the one business occupying the entire building.
Okay, I see. And another question is about the, have you ever asked the owner or the pastor about the special celebration of the church? Whether it occurred during Christmas time or Easter time? And will it create the problems of parking to the vicinity around that church? Expecting the flow of traffic? And how many time would happen? And how can we remedy that problems?
All church activities are required to occur inside the building, so they will not be doing any activities outside. Additionally, churches typically have certain events. And as long as they are done inside and not every day, most likely if there's unwanted events occurring on a regular basis, most likely the residents on the south side will file complaints. So we will receive, we most likely will receive complaint about the activities, and we will investigate at that time, but.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, sorry, one quick point, the Supercalif which is next door at 5952, they're only open Monday through Friday currently at this point from 10 to 5. So a lot of the the operating hours of that business are going to be outside the operating hours of the proposed conditional use part.
Would you think if we give them variance, we better to make everything work?
I'm sorry, what?
Parking variance. Do I think the church maybe need help, maybe give them parking variance? So it wouldn't affect anything?
They're not required to have a variance because based on the current parking requirements of the city.
They have enough parking.
They're sufficient parking.
Okay, so everything should be good? I don't see any issues at all.
Are there any questions from our commissioner? Well, I think we can open for public hearing.
Chair Bowie.
Yes.
I do have three speaker cards filled out. So the first speaker is the applicant himself, Mike Easton.
Yes, please.
So we have three members from the applicant, so Mike Easton, Paul McCarronick, and Christina Karinick.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mike Easton. I reside in Orange, California. Our offices are in Santa Ana, California. We have been working with the church and the design and, of course, planning staff for quite some time now. And I believe that it sounds to me like most of the questions you've asked are have been already actually answered by planning staff. But I'd like to introduce Paul and, I'm sorry, and his wife Christina. And they, of course, are the pastor and and the operators of the church. We've been all working together. I can say that Paul has spent quite a bit of time with the various tenants, the rest of the tenants in the center. And perhaps I could have him speak to that because I think there were a few questions and or concerns about the other tenants and perhaps the effect the church would have on them. So I would introduce Paul and let him kind of give you an indication of where that's at.
All right. My name is Paul Karnick. I'm the pastor, one of the pastors, my wife Christina is the other pastor. And we're both from Anaheim. As far as the proper, first of all, thank you for having us here today. It's been exciting to be here, so appreciate that. And any questions you have as far as the tenants? I've been talking to a lot of them, a lot of the community, and have a pretty decent feel of what's going on. But any of the concerns that you have, I know on the, if you want me to talk about the one business next door, their hours are what you said, very low traffic. If you ever see the parking lots empty because it's a wholesale public, open to the public, but mainly wholesale, and they mostly ship out. So the parking lot's almost always empty for their business.
Hi, my name is Christina Karinick, also from Anaheim, and just wanted to thank this entire planning commission. Sandy, thank you so very much for for just even hearing us out today. We're very excited to to be a part of the city of Westminster.
Chair Bowie, I do have some questions if they're done with their presentation.
Would you please?
If not, if you have something else to add.
Oh, please, please go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So as I had mentioned, when I went out today and I noticed the site, it has the 1416 church. So is that your church? Or did you buy this property from 1416 church? Or are you operating in that facility now?
Well, I can, you know, answer and I'll let Paul expand on that. The property was purchased by Lighthouse Church from Goodwill Industries. I think it's a couple of years back now. And the 1416 is really just kind of an AKA, they it's part of the Lighthouse Church and the organization. It's an overall large organization, and they're kind of working through the process of, I'm not sure if it's a name change or. So why don't you go ahead and address that?
So so Lighthouse Community Church is under the denomination of the Church of the Nazarene, which is worldwide. But we're independent for that. 14 six is our DBA that we'll be using eventually. So 14 six will be the Lighthouse Community Church is what the name of the property is under, that name, Lighthouse Community Church. But we're rebranding because Lighthouse Community Church of the Nazarene was too big to put on business cards.
So so have you have you held services there?
We were waiting for this to start holding services.
Okay, so you have it, so you've you've got your name up, but you haven't.
And we had it covered. And we had it covered with a black so that nobody would see that. But we were notified that the black covering had to come off, so we went ahead, and it was close enough to this. So we went ahead and took the black covering off.
Okay, another question for you, too.
I'm going, sorry, please. Well, I was just going to say that I had mentioned to them that it really, if anything, one, signed permits, and two, should have said coming soon.
Okay.
It was just one of those, you know, things, so.
Okay. And and I did notice today, too, you have a a large, looked a large trailer, it says rent this portable stage, is that yours?
Yeah, so our ministry, we go into parks and do events for years. We, a lot of it was in Stanton, when our church was in Stanton, we had a two acre, so we would do events in in the back of our church. Now we mainly go to San Diego, and so we put the advertising on there, so a lot of people in San Diego rent our mobile stage. And so when we're not using it, we rent it out.
Okay, now, if I'm if I'm correct, where you have the where you have that portable stage now, that'll interfere with the required parking behind your facility, so is that going to go somewhere else?
Yeah, it's, yes, it's it's there for now. We have, we have in the works another location we're going to park it at, which is in Huntington Beach. It's another church that one of our churches. But for right now, nobody's there, so we've been using it there. But there is also space that's not counted in the parking. But for the most part, it's at Beach and Slater, there's one of our churches is there, and they have a huge parking lot.
Okay. And then regarding the access to the church from the from the rear parking lot? So will you have a designated member or entrance at the back of the church where people can go in from the back parking lot and through the back of the church? Or will they have to go around to the front?
I can address that, yes, that will be staffed. And actually, I worked with Sandy quite a bit on this and made sure that we did have, in fact, a Title 24 ADA path of travel. We made some adjustments with the parking that's directly behind the church as well as the parking in that area. Suggestions by Sandy with respect to how to address that were considered and adopted. And so we we've, and of course, we're going to be working with both planning and building staff through the building plan check process, which, of course, we have not done yet until we get approval to make sure, as she said, that we have adequate lighting. I can tell you that the church has asked me to exceed the one foot candle requirement, and we will, of course, be using cutoffs to make sure that it doesn't spill over into any of the adjacent neighborhood.
And it will be adequate width, though, to get from that rear parking area up along the up along the side of the church to the front?
Yes, it's compliant, yes.
Okay. Okay, and in regards then to the front of the church in the front, there is that landscape there, that planter, is that yours?
It does belong to, well, it it's maintained overall by the association, the shopping center, but it is in effect ours to maintain and to dress up.
It's on your property.
And we intend to dress it up.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, because I would, so you'd be okay with the condition that that will be improved as part of this approval?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then also just another another thought, too. When I came out today and I noticed the name on the church, and then I noticed, too, that the the front of the building, it's all white. It's just the glass is all covered in white. And it to me, a church, either churches are wonderful, and they're an important part of every community. I'm glad to see you folks are here and been working through the process. But have you given any consideration to maybe doing something to the front that would make it more inviting and visually to to come in? We do have a requirement for commercial property, and I don't know if this would fall under that, but for like retail stores, and as I realize, it's not a retail facility. But for the retail, that there's a requirement that you can't have the windows 100% blocked out. There has to be some visibility. But if that's an issue with the church and you wanted for some reason to have it so that it was not totally transparent, maybe doing something of a decorative nature to the front, not necessarily with stonework or anything expensive, but something to make it, I think, just maybe more attractive or more to stand out a little bit, too, let people know you're there.
Yeah, more appealing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, please, right ahead.
We just put the white up so that while it was empty, that people wouldn't see the empty and try breaking in. So the, and we we copied that from other places that are for lease. I'm like, what a great idea, they're just whited out. It's the, from the art store, it's a paint that just.
It was pills off, yeah. So. I'll address some of that. So we have been discussing how that would be handled. We do quite a bit of retail in many stores, including mall stores and those type of things, so we are familiar with the requirements. It's our intent to work together, and of course, we'll be doing so with planning because anything that we decide to do there will, of course, go through planning. We thought about some penetrable graphics, a few things that might really dress it up. Certainly want to dress up the, you might have noticed that the base or the bottom underneath the the glass storefronts and such around it could certainly use some dress up. And in the past, we actually had approached some of the association, the association is a pretty loose knit group, and everyone seems fine with us doing some dress up and making it look better. We certainly intend to do that.
Okay, and then as to the the floor plan, is the floor plan an actual representation or just showing just in kind of an overall big picture of what's happening inside as far as the sanctuary, the stage, the offices? Or is in fact there a lot of just undesignedated space?
The floor plan is an actual floor plan, code compliant. Some of the areas that you've seen that were white are circulation space, some code required, and some that we've made a little bit more generous. Normally, you know, in a church, we like to have some space to kind of move around and have people be able to move freely. But the space plan is an actual final space plan that we will, of course, be turning into construction drawings and and then constructing.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions, Chair Bowie.
Thank you. Any other? Want to bring up?
I just have one question. Looking at the the site plan, those back 29 spaces behind the building are kind of a dead man's area, if you will. Having Goodwill and formerly Rancho Market out of business, I'm sure it's collected a bunch of trash vagrants and other unwanted. Not necessarily part of a conditional use permit, the church considered protecting its parishioners by installing some security cameras so we can find out what happens to their vehicles.
Something we haven't discussed, but certainly I believe that's something that would be beneficial.
I highly recommend it.
We have, we have two cameras, no, three cameras back there now. And the other owners, we work with the other owner, too, and he's putting up cameras as well, but there will be more of them.
And I would imagine that, once again, I think one of the things you're discussing is, of course, when you have vacant properties and you have properties that are not being used in that area is, as you say, kind of a little bit of a collecting point right now. Once you have an active tenant there and we have lighting and, you know, we have parishioners out there and docents and such, you know, working through and helping people there. I think you're going to find that that should greatly reduce some of the problems that might have been experienced recently.
I have a question to you. And first of all, the I look at the layout and would like to stress the importance of handicap design for the area for the church. And please put that into consideration to make sure that you comply to own handicap requirement, not only for parking, but also for accessibility. And hope that the planning, the building department take a look at it carefully, too.
Yes, Chairman, they, we have taken it into consideration. I think one of the things that Sandy had mentioned is that we have an ADA ramp inside for a stage. We have full circulation. Part of that is, in fact, Title 24 ADA. The new restrooms are all compliant. We are very familiar, our company does a lot of ADA Title 24, and in fact, we work with Goodwill, so we're very sensitive to that. So we will make sure that that all of that is fully compliant.
And another question is about the operation status of the church. Is it falling into 501 C three, A, B, or C? Would you please explain to me?
We're 501 C three. And it's classified as a church.
Okay.
And I've turned, I believe we turned in that form for that, which gives the detail from the our status. But that's as much as I know on that one.
Chairman, that form and all of the supporting documentation documentation required were, in fact, turned in with the CPA application.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any of us have any questions to people here? We have no questions to you, thank you, and would like to hear the public.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chair Bowie, we have no further request to speak forms, but this would probably be an appropriate time to ask any members of the public if they would like to wish to speak on the public hearing item.
Okay.
Are there any members in the public that wish to speak on this item? Okay, Chair Bowie, we have no further speakers. Chair Bowie, this would be the appropriate time to close the public hearing.
Okay, would you please, so? Okay. So is is there a motion before we take the decision on this item? We would like to close the public hearing, and now we go to our decision of our group.
Well, Chair Bowie.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion at this point, and then certainly subject to discussion by the other commissioners, but I'd like to make a motion to approve as recommended with the addition of these three items and one that would be that would be no storage in the back of the facility. Staff and the applicant will work on the designation design of a front elevation and that the planter in the front will be refurbished by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion and a second.
Commissioner Anderson, can you repeat the third?
Oh, yes, that the that the planter in the front of the church would be refurbished. Oh, yes, that the, the planter in the front of the church would be refurbished by the applicant.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Anderson with the additions to no storage in the back of the facility, second, work on design of, with staff, design of the elevation, front elevation, and third, the planters in the front of the church to be refurbished by the applicant. Do we have a second?
I second it.
That motion was made by Commissioner Anderson and seconded by Power, and that's to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, Approving Case Number 2023-0667", which involves a conditional use permit to establish a new religious place of worship on the property located at 5948 Westminster Boulevard. And I'll call rogue call, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Walberg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Havadi?
Yes.
And Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
So the decision of the planning commission is final, must appeal by November 16th.
So now we go to regular business now, and item number nine, regular business, do we have any? None, okay. Now, item 10, reports.
None.
None? And item 11, matters from the staff. Are there any announcement from the staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie, just wanted to thank the staff tonight and also the planning commission for service. And we will have a meeting in two weeks on the 15th. We have, I believe, one new public hearing and a continued one as well.
Okay.
That night.
Now, we would like to move to item 12, matters from the planning commission, including the AEB 1234. Do any commissioners have any announcement that you would like to share with us?
Oh, yes, I do, Chair Bowie.
Okay, please go ahead.
This is in reference to two, possibly three staff reports that have come to the commission, which have been very good. These are the detailed staff reports on housing. And there is obviously, and this is on legislation being adopted by the state of California, which is drastically changing the role of cities as far as land use and how much control cities have. And right now, cities are getting, it just seems like every day, the state is adopting legislation which is taking powers away from the city to regulate the way the city should be done in a way that will be best for all. So, and our planning staff has done an excellent job of briefing us on this legislation. But I thought it might also be helpful, rather than having staff spend time to tell us what's been done, maybe in lieu of that, maybe have staff take a look at proposed legislation and bring that to the planning commission and ask for the planning commission input, and then the planning commission could then review it and then send its recommendation to the city council as to far as, is this something that should be proposed or should be approved or, I guess, accepted or rejected by the city, and then forward that to our state legislators to let them know what's going on. So that was, and so if that's something that the commission is okay with, perhaps staff could put together a report on the concept for consideration at a future meeting.
I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Anderson, I would definitely support that.
Please go ahead.
That's it, just wanted to offer my support as well, I think that's a fantastic idea. It's good to know what's coming for us as commissioners, for the staff as well, and also, you know, give the council an opportunity to weigh in and possibly push back on some of this more onerous legislation. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any other items we'd like to present? Now, we go to item number 13. I would like to adjourn the meeting at 7:17 PM. And thank you all of you coming here to our meeting, and best wish to you all. And the next regular meeting of the planning commission will be on Wednesday, November 15, 2023. Best wish to you all. Thank you.